Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selecting Meeting for Monday, February 8th. Call for order at 6:33 PM. The town uses a product called GoToWebinar for these meetings. All content is recorded. You can join via phone in a listen-only mode or via computer mobile device with a small app. There's options for raising your hand for questions or entering them into the question box in the chat. Tool. Keep in mind that all questions are part of the record and taking those questions is at the discretion of the chair. All right, our first item of business, I actually jumped to the last item on the list. Discussion regarding Church Street Bridge. So we received a proactive notice from DOT that they are derating the bridge on Church and North over Key up Brook. And according to the latest discussion we had with them today, it has to go down to one lane, although they are not necessarily changing the weight rating if it is one lane. We talked with them about some options and what that will do to traffic patterns on Route 2 if we did one ways on North and Church in different directions. Moving the bridge to one lane. Impacts to Mountain Road as well as High Street if we did those. Concerns from public safety and public works about traffic patterns, potential for causing more vehicle accidents around safe areas, difficulty in turning, needing potentially to add traffic lights, other things, you know, backup of traffic, all the different impacts that we knew of. During that discussion, the idea of putting up a traffic light at the bridge in all directions and making it bidirectional. Single lane, but you know, taking turns basically across it came up. And at this point, I guess Bill, you know, and Glenn is on and probably some others can speak to, you know, their opinions of it. I think we're kind of going to investigate what that would entail and what that would look like. Probably has the least impact to Route 2 traffic and although it impacts the residents along, you know, Church Street and North. I at least believe it's probably less than if we did one way in both directions, you know, if we did a I think the the best case scenario in one way would have been North Street goes north to Church and Church Street is southbound only across the bridge. All kinds of concerns with that pattern about, you know, vehicles trying to turn onto North from Route 2 and making that corner, especially westbound traffic. Concerns about we talked about reversing that and making Church Street northbound, which might be safer off a route to is a little longer sight lines, a little easier to pull off or to turn on. But then on North Street, if North Street was southbound, the sight lines turning off of that street are are not great. And we know we've had more vehicle accidents in the past because it's difficult to turn off of there. So I welcome your questions and ideas and thoughts, but basically at the end of the day, any, any of those seem to be worse, I guess, in in either direction.
Yeah, so I I I've looked at any scenario that I could think of when I read the read the packet on the on the issue at hand and as, as I read it, I don't see that any all of them have problems associated with it. So whichever we choose, it's led me to believe. And and I'll wait to hear from would like to hear from Glenn and Public Safety and all those folks involved. But I kind of think that for me, the, 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 the best way to go is to shut the bridge down on both ends and not allow any traffic, but that creates a problem for North Street clearly and majority of the traffic would go down north and and the issue that you bring up regarding turning off of north on to Main Street is definitely a problem. Also, tractor trailers continue to come down and that's still going to be another major problem. Even if we reduce the road to one lane. And I thought I read that that one lane would be reduced in width. And if if that is the case, a tractor trailer truck isn't going to make it through here when it comes down. It's going to be pretty tight and both sides of the road, if we go with a traffic light are going to be blocked on a good day when there's nothing to interfere with the traffic. On traffic is backed up from Route 2 all the way up to almost up to up to North Street. So we're going to have traffic backed up on both sides. And I don't think people are going to be happy with it, including the trailer.
Agreed. I've got to answer some of those and Glenn's on and Brian as well. In no particular order, we did talk about the bridge specifically and got a little more clarity. They're not changing the rating. Weight rating as it stands today, as long as it's only a single lane of traffic at any given time. They, the, the barriers that would have to be put out, reducing the width of the bridge because of the areas that have further, you know, degraded are four feet off the guardrail on the northbound side. So we would actually still have quite a wide roadway across that bridge, more than one lane width. On that traffic flow, there wasn't a concern that a truck couldn't be able to make that turn even with that. There was also the conversation about the bus, which comes up north and then down Church and making that turning radius to the right to come across Church and on to Church Street across the bridge. And we believe that that still would be wide enough for that as well. So closing it, you know, would obviously impact that, too. We did bring up to DOT that we believe we will back up traffic if we put a traffic light, you know, in in one-way patterns through that bridge will back it up on the route to especially like Friday afternoon, evening, et cetera. With westbound traffic, probably past Prospect was my, my belief. And same thing in the other direction. And I think it's true, even if we make even if we did Church as local only and closed the bridge, I think we would back up traffic in both directions, trying to get on to North. And I think we'd have a traffic light. At which point you'd need warnings up by Mountain Road and, you know, and probably up by High Street as well. And you know, we discussed the turning radius on and off of North Street. Public safety and, you know, we're trying to turn an apparatus up north. If there's no traffic on the road, they're still going to be in the, in the eastbound lane of Route 2 to make that corner and, you know, all those kinds of concerns. Again, rigs and other trucks we don't want up there coming down, we'd still have those issues, too. Again, no good answers. And someone brought it up that we'll have to close the bridge to fix it at some point. So we will have to to go to completely closed at some point.
Right.
I worry about, you know, High Street as well, just because the Swamp Road Bridge. You know, if we push traffic to North, we're probably pushing it to high, that bridge isn't going to handle the turning radius of some larger vehicles or the weight ratings, I don't believe. So we kind of asked the question about closing it completely. North in general to, you know, through traffic and have it local only, but, you know, we push the traffic to Mountain Road, we push the traffic, you know, not all the way to 63 likely, which is not good either. So that wasn't a lot of answers, but just the things that we discussed in that, in that meeting. So you're up to speed. We did reiterate the tractor trailer truck exemption exclusion and how it, even with enforcement, it's not having the desired effect. And they seemed surprised and asked about signage and other things, but, you know, we kind of talked through what we had, but encouraged them to kind of look if they had a way to make it more successful, we would welcome it, especially now. So Glenn.
Do we have, I know this is kind of early, but do we have an idea how long this is, this process is going to play out? Are we talking a couple of years?
It's all going to depend on how quickly you as a board and Bingcom want to move on this. If you, if you want to do a full replacement, if you want to bring this up for a special time meeting. The reality is engineering and permitting at minimum is 10 months. Give or take. I think we should be realistic about that. And construction, Glenn and I had already, to be clear, this project is not a new project. It's something that was on our radar when the state last year told us that it was no longer on their CIP plan. Glenn and I requested an engineering proposal, which is what was in your packet. That came in in December. So we've been getting ready to put this on the capital plan for consideration. Many of the components will be precast for construction. So the construction itself should not be more than a few months. But it's all that permitting and public meetings and environmental impact work that we need to do first. We also kind of need that time to figure out the financing of a structure like this. The town hasn't done this in decades. So we're going to have to relearn that process with current regulations. And Mast dot has a review of all bridges as they informed us today. So not only do we have the normal process, but we will also have to go through that, that review process. So I would say on the short end, you're talking somewhere in the 14-month timeframe, potentially closer to 16 months. And that's, that's if we move quick. If you, if we don't have the funding right now, and if you want to delay this to think about your options, obviously that adds more time to any final product.
And cost probably.
Right, of course. And the, it's not only DOT, it's Boston, according to DOT. So Boston has to sign off on it as well. Boston DOT, not just local. Because it's over 20-foot span.
Right. Are there any, any grants available for this?
It's not going to be the Small Bridge Program, which has become very popular out here. This is too big for that. But we would explore whatever state grants may exist. It's possible to use some Chapter 90 funds towards this. Obviously, tentatively, we already had Chapter 90 funds designated for other projects. I don't think you should anticipate that this project is going to be less than a million dollars. If we're just being upfront and honest about it. So I don't know that we're going to be able to find a grant in and of itself that will pay for all of this. But this will give us an opportunity. We, we, we won't know exactly how much to look for until the engineers have completed their permitting work and have issued you an opinion of probable cost. So we can start to explore funding opportunities and sort of prepare the timeline for a potential grant application. But until we have that opinion in a general concept that you want to move forward on, we won't be able to apply.
The other thing, and Glenn, we will give you a chance to talk and to everyone else who's here for other stuff. Apologies, we will probably be running just a little late tonight. The other piece is, so the, the timeline, as we understand it, is going to be two weeks from the receipt of the official notice that we have to close it or close one lane, I should say. And it will, it will detail better than this did the options we have. One is obviously close it completely according to the conversation. The other one is make it one one lane of traffic and it's was not DOT's concern if we made it bidirectional with a traffic light or not. They only required that we have an engineer sign, I have engineer sign plans for it so that will take a little time even for for doing, you know, that if that's what we do. I think at least initially, unless we decide differently tonight, we're going to start exploring that because we have a very short time limit to try to do something. But then I think to the bigger picture, they brought up finding a way to very quickly begin the engineering, since we do have a proposal for that and get that process started will allow us to hopefully work through what are all the, the challenges we're going to face? What is that probable cost going to be? And is that realistic to maybe happen in the very end of FY22? Or is that something that, you know, we end up doing in FY23, either early or end of the year? I think that's probably in my mind, the the reality is I don't think we'll be starting construction any less than 14 months from now. And maybe it's 16 or 18 or 20 months from now, you know, realistically. I, I don't know seasonally how, how effective that'll be, but I don't think that's going to be winter work, right? That's to me, it's going to be spring, fall or probably summer, fall, because I don't think they want to do it in the spring with water and key up. That's just my guess, but Glenn, I give you a chance to chime in with your thoughts.
Yeah. So my, my concern with, with the, with the one lane, I realize that's probably the best way to do it. So they're narrowing it down to it's, it's approximately 18 foot is what the travel lane is going to be. But that's already an S curve to begin with. So as 18 foot sounds wide enough as a single lane, it's not a straight shot on or off in, in either direction. So Wednesday, after we finish getting cleaned up from the storm, we're going to go up, we're going to lay it out with just our regular traffic cones to see what, you know, the lane is actually truly what it's going to be. And again, if there's a straight shot 18 foot, I, I don't think it'd be a problem or anything. But it's quite an S curve, the, the bridge abutment, the sidewalk. On the side that's open, I think we're probably going to have some problems with vehicles getting on and off of that to straighten out to get on to Church Street. Depending where that other temporary traffic light is on Church Street. Is, you know, that whole corner is going to determine how far back that's going to have to sit for a stoplight also.
Yeah, definitely expected. We'd have to push the northbound traffic back away from the intersection to give some room to maneuver.
Right. And, and, you know, and I fully understand that people are not going to like traffic lights out there at nighttime. But again, if, if Mast dot is pushing this, I, you know, I don't see where we have a choice on that. I think it'd be safer to keep that open. I know the lights are not going to be probably very well taken. But I think it's better than the alternative, sorry, Bill, of closing it completely. It's, it, that's going to happen at some point. It's going to happen for, for a while. Part of me would like to test that theory out now so we know what the, the challenges are going to be when it does come construction time. You know, it's, it's, it's easier to open it back up now after, say, a few months of seeing what the challenges are than to wait and get to those challenges a day of construction. And there's going to be more obstacles, you know, with, with crews and equipment and everything else there. So part of me would like to close it first to work out some bugs because it is going to happen, you know, once construction does start. I don't know what anybody's thoughts or feelings are on that. But after our meeting, that's, that's what I've been thinking about is maybe we should close it first.
I think you, you proposed it in the DOT meeting and I forgot to recap it, but the idea laying out the columns and getting a feel for what does that look like will answer better than speculating, you know, what do we think for, for large vehicles and things like that. So I think that's the first step, just to understand that. Obviously, please have PD assist with that in the detail or something on the northbound side for safety, but.
Oh, absolutely.
I, you know, depending on when you get to that, if you want to give me a ring and I don't know, Bill, if you want to know, I, I might want to just come see it, you know, see what it looks like visually. When you're doing it, if I can, if I can get down there, I don't know. Your thoughts, Bill?
Yes, I, I, I would like to do that as well when, as it happens.
I can, I'll invite Chief to to have to make sure they bring one or two of the trucks through it also. You know, that, that, that could probably determine a lot also.
Okay.
But yeah, so at, at this point, I'm planning for Wednesday. No, it does not have to be early first thing in the morning. We can, we can let a little bit of the day pass by first.
Wednesday works for me.
Okay.
I have a few pockets of availability between meetings. So I'll, I'll try to fit it in. Just let me know when you guys are going to be down there.
Well, you, you let me know what your availabilities are and we'll, we'll make it work around that.
Brian, do we need to post if we're both going down there?
He's muted.
He is muted.
There we go. I was just going to say a site visit does not need to be posted. We just have to avoid deliberation and you can reconvene and discuss any policy decisions at, at your next meeting.
Which we may need to do sooner than the 22nd or whatever that date is based on this project. Okay. All right, I'll, I'll coordinate with you offline, Glenn.
Okay. Yep, perfect.
Anything else on that, Bill?
Uh, no, I have nothing else.
All right. Well, thank, thank you all for moving this ahead to the agenda. I very much appreciate it.
Of course. Yeah. All right. Well, we'll go from there. We'll, we'll do that and we'll continue exploring what it would take to do the, those different options and we'll we'll see where we are from there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Just two seconds on the River Warner Straction Street, the survey crew was out there today. They'll go back and they'll download all their information into the computer. So it could be a few days early next week before we hear any results from that.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Okay, back to regularly scheduled business. Do we have library trustees here?
We do.
We do. All right. We will call the joint meeting with the Board of Library Trustees to order at 6:55 PM. Thank you for your patience. Hi, Dan McKenzie. So we had a letter of interest from Pat Sem for the vacant library trustee position.
Yes. Correct. I don't see that she's on.
She's on the meeting.
Is she okay? Good.
Looks like McKenzie's mic is live.
Yep, I'm here.
There we go.
Yep, I'm here.
Thank you. Any concerns, questions, comments from the trustees?
I'd be pleased to have Pat as a trustee. She's certainly familiar with the town and has had her own business, I believe, and capable, able, willing to learn and would you know, move that we appoint her as to fill the term of report.
I would second that.
Okay. It sounded like a motion in a second. I'll just add a little clarity and not to, not to repeat it, but make a motion that we appoint Patricia Sem to the Board of Library Trustees through the end of fiscal, well, through June 30, 2021.
That's much more clear.
Just, just for the record.
And, and whatever, I would second that. That's what we need to do. That's fine.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
Just real quick, it's a roll call vote. So if we can go one at a time.
I, Jacob Smith.
I, William Benbury.
I, Daniel Hammack.
I, Mackenzie Bailey. I usually do Bailey, I, so then I got all confused.
All good, all good. And so assuming she accepts the appointment and gets sworn in, she'll also sign the, the nomination paper for the ballot. Assuming that gets done in time for March 15th, then she'll be on the ballot to be voted for the balance of the term. This wasn't this year, was it? She had, there was additional years on that term, I think, right?
I believe there was one additional year. I think so.
I believe so.
Yeah, okay.
Excellent. We will notify Patricia tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question, a housekeeping question, but I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Not at all. Go ahead. I was going to ask if there was anything else before we adjourned the joint meeting.
So I just want to ask, so now as an attendee of the next meeting, how do I get there? Am I staying on the screen? Are we closing this meeting out and going to a new link?
Yeah, it's going to be all the same length. So you can just say.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Motion to adjourn the joint meeting and continue the select board meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We have about one minute, so I think that's time to do any business. So we'll just try to get back on track for seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Absolutely. What I will do is take that one minute just to let everyone know. And Brian can help me clarify anything. I, I don't get it exactly right, but we have Mast DOT is doing a virtual public hearing for design plans, I believe it is, for the safety barriers at the French King Bridge on Thursday, the 25th?
Yes.
At 10 AM, I believe. It's on their site. We're also posting it on our website and social media, et cetera. But more importantly, because that is not open to public comment during, only ahead of time in writing. Our representatives, Whipson Comfort, are holding a Zoom session Thursday evening from 6 6 to 8 PM where they will be hearing public comment and having discussion about that. And then they're planning to aggregate that and put that, submit that into DOT ahead of the hearing. So I just wanted everyone who's on the call, the public, et cetera, will put that information out. I think some of it already is out. But wanted to make sure that everyone knows that that is happening this Thursday evening, 6 to 8. Unfortunately, some of us are tied up till 7:00 and some of us are tied up at 7:00. So you know, some of our public safety and here and in Gil are in the Police Chief Screening Committee, which is also that night. And then some are in the planning board meeting that night. So hopefully everyone has an opportunity to, to jump in there, but it will be is unfortunately overlapping though. So I don't know, you know, Bill, if, if you wish to go, able to, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chief Wonka is also going to be right there for six. So I let him know that we would join as we end one or the other meeting. But if, Sukman Benbury, if you and Chief Wonka don't mind representing us at 6 o'clock, we will all get there as soon as we can out of the other meetings.
Okay.
And obviously we welcome anyone from the town, the public, the offices who wish to, wish to attend and or voice comment. And appreciate the representatives doing, doing that session for us. Okay. At this point, I will call the joint meeting of the Finance Committee and the School Committee to order at 7:01 PM. We have a forum of the school committee.
Let's see.
They, they were meeting literally right before this, so they may just be finishing up.
Right.
Okay.
They just finished. They're on their way.
Okay, perfect. I was thinking we could do the letter of interest for the vacancy to start and get that out of the way. Obviously, a potential member can't vote, but could at least join to listen.
Quickly take this time to quickly update attendance.
Brian, have you heard anything about the electric company and, and, and the power outage tomorrow?
Only to confirm what you all were kind enough to share last week because they had not notified us. So
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Our rep at, at National Grid was also not aware. So they were able to confirm the information that was shared. So thank you. they were able to confirm the information that was shared, so thank you for that.
Julie Wheeler, who got that to me, Brian, so thanks to Julie. And it looks like it'll probably be Wednesday because of the storm coming in tomorrow, so it looks like that.
Question, I have not heard a, an update to that, so I, anybody who's called us, I've asked them to, to reach back out to National Grid on the customer service line that they provided, um, just to verify whether or not the weather date is, is about to be used. The snowfall that we're supposed to get tomorrow, I don't know if it's gonna be significant enough, um, but it does sound like the work is about four hours worth of work, um, so, so I don't know how much leeway there is between that nine to two eight, that nine to two PM, I think was the timeframe they gave.
Yeah.
If they need all four hours, they, they may need to shift it, so. It's always something.
It is always something.
Well, I just think February was a poor choice of time to have everybody not have heat for the entire day and all the children, you know, remote learning, m- most of the children are remote learning. Mo- most of the area children.
And it's all of, it's all of Mountain Road and Gary Street and that section of West Main Street.
Yeah.
Encourage you to voice that concern to them, not that it will change anything, but.
Yeah, I don't really think.
I wish they did.
I could tell you my house was quite cold. Once the heat gets turned off, I had that experience today, so.
I bet, I can understand.
Okay, so so far, we only have one member of the school committee with us. Maybe the rest are on their way.
Looks like we have two now. So do we have to get to three, Brian, officially?
Uh, I mean, you don't need the school committee to vote on anything tonight, though I'm aware of, other than, uh, if you want, uh, I was thinking budget, in terms of the appointment, it's a majority vote of the remaining members, um, of both boards, so I think you could do it with, with two, but I think it's cleaner and it avoids any potential challenges if we could get to the three.
Right, I, I was just thinking, uh, yeah, I'd, I'd wanna get to three, I think. We don't need to get to four, because we don't need the majority.
Three of us attending tonight, we just came from our other meeting, I think, um, might have taken some time. I know mine had to download.
No problem.
That's Eric here, but I can't get the video, so.
We can hear you, that's, that's good enough. Yeah, Eric.
Alright, so you now have a quorum of the school committee.
Excellent.
This is Dave Shagden, can you hear me now?
You can.
Sir.
Alright, uh, I did call the joint meeting of the Finance Committee and the School Committee to order, as we waited for people to file in, um, what we'll do first is we'll cover the, uh, vacancy letter of interest. So my understanding, we had a letter of interest from Catherine McLaughlin, if I pronounced that correctly, uh, for the school committee vacancy.
Correct.
Has the school committee had a chance to review the, the letter?
Yes, it was sent to, to the chair as well as our office.
Erica, I see you talking, but I don't hear you.
Alright, there I am, okay.
There you are.
This one's a little different from the last meeting.
No problem.
Yeah, yes, I, I read the letter from Katie, yep.
Okay, any, um, any concerns or questions?
You should be a great member.
Okay, uh, well, I'll make a motion that we appoint, uh, Catherine McLaughlin to the school committee through, uh, June thirty twenty twenty-one. And this is a roll call vote.
Please.
School committee and the Board of Selectmen. All in favor? I, Jacob Smith.
I, William Benbury.
Hi, Jennifer Aggron.
Hi, David Shagden.
Hi, Eric Sam.
Catherine tomorrow.
Thank you.
And just procedurally, I believe, uh, that seat was not up this year, was it?
Good question, this seat's been vacant for a little over a year, so I need to double check on the, the unexpired term of that.
Okay.
But if there is an unexpired balance, you're right, this position would be, um, up to fulfill the balance of that on this year's annual town election.
Yeah, oh. So assuming she comes in, she'll go on the, the nomination paper and then be on the, on the ballot for either the balance of the term or the renewal, if, if it's up this year.
Correct.
Excellent. Okay, uh, then we will move into FY twenty-two budget discussion.
In your packets, you should have the narrative sent over for the elementary school budget as well as uh, the current FY twenty-two budget proposal from the school committee. Let's pull that up for you.
I don't know who is going to lead the discussion, but if, um, I don't know if that's gonna be you Bruce, but, um, if you wanna walk us through the narrative and then through the budget.
Uh, the narrative I don't have, but I can narrate as we go through the budget, just go through some. So, um, just to highlight a few things before we really get into it. Uh, we got a couple of, uh, positive things going on. We have, uh, several retirements, and if we have Lisa with us, she may wanna talk about that, that we're looking to probably save, um, some significant amount of money. And the other thing is, uh, the elementary school was bearing a lot of the costs for the east side building. And as you know, we're not there anymore, and therefore we have, uh, for all intensive purposes eliminated the costs for that out of the school budget, and that's a significant savings. On the negative side, we actually have a, a district, um, special needs placement that we're having to deal with, that's actually driving the budget back up again and ending with a, a two point two percent increase in the, uh, elementary budget. You want me to? If you wanna move some pages there, Eric, we, or Brian, we can.
Yep, what page do you wanna go to?
Hmm, I think the second page is just highlighting some, as you can see, this highlights, um, basically our net increases and decreases on a, on a macro basis. The real savings is in the, um, the building maintenance line. So that's, okay. Um, and we are still budgeting for an increase in salaries for the, um, uh, Unit A and Unit B, and I think, um, if I'm not mistaken, we have a contract for Unit A that is reflected in here, so. Um, we can go to the next page, Brian?
Yep.
And, um, your share of the U twenty-eight budget is actually down a little bit this year. That's why you're seeing the negatives in the upper grouping there, that's mostly U twenty-eight and a few small things that's related to the school committee, which we pretty much level fund. Uh, and our legal counsel is, uh, given us another year with level funding, which I think is a great bargain. So if we scroll down into the instruction, uh, you can see some of the, the big, um, increases, just, uh, salary based on the contract. Uh, the special needs salaries are down because of a, uh, I think, believe there's a retirement there, and, uh, the other things reflect my thoughts on salary increases for the para. Uh, we had a, the library teacher, uh, retired. Uh, that person was the very top end of the scale person, and we're hoping to save some uh, significant amount of money there. And, um, most of the rest is reflective of, um, increases in U twenty-eight, um, uh, salaries and, uh, your others, your proportional share. Uh, the other school services, um, we have a transportation contract, a five-year contract. It's a two and a half percent per year increase throughout the life of the contract, so that's what the twenty-eight hundred dollars is. And the food service, um, we supplement the program. And I'm trying to keep ahead a little bit of the, of the cost of the program, so that we can, at the end of the year, make sure that that is not a deficit rolling into next year. Um, we're down to the plant operations and maintenance grouping. This is the, like I say, the biggest savings in the budget. Um, and I have a question while we're here. I still have budgeted a thousand dollars for electricity and heat in the east side building. And correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but I think you were, your, the town is taking that over, so that's probably a couple thousand dollars I can take out of the, the budget.
We've moved the, the electricity costs and, and the building's been winterized, so we've moved that over to town buildings.
Yeah, so, okay, so that's something we can, I'll make an adjustment when we finalize. Um, but as you can see, we were budgeting a significant sum of money, nine thousand dollars for fuel and fifty-two hundred dollars for electricity for that building, so that's, uh, and we had some maintenance over there, and we're not planning to do any, so we've eliminated that also. And fixed charges pretty much remaining the same. Um, the acquisition of equipment is reflective of a little bit of additional money for U twenty-eight. And then, if we get down to the bottom line, one nineteen, um, that's what I'm projecting for the costs of an out-of-district placement. So, and there you see, the grand total is seventy-three thousand dollars. Uh, you take that fifty-seven thousand out, we're only at like, uh, point one five percent. So, that's where we are with the, elementary school. And if you wanna keep on going, Brian, we can, I think we should be getting to the presentation where you can see basically the whole breakdown of everything, but I've gone through all the highlights. This is where it's all re, all reflected.
Questions or comments from the group?
Uh, I'd like to say, I, I've gone through most of these numbers, perhaps a few have changed since they were provided to us, but not by much. Uh, and I didn't have any question with them. Uh, it seemed to me that two point, one or two, whatever, right, right around the two percent overall increase financially is, is why I'm here, I'm not qualified to say if you need more or less teachers or more or less books or that stuff, that's up to you folks, administration and school committee, but financially, uh, I thought it was well presented and I didn't have any questions. I don't know if the other finance committee members may have or not.
Not me. I, I liked the two percent, that looked pretty good. I'd like to make a comment, if everybody can hear me. Trust me, I love the two percent too, but understand, in future years, as we look three, four years down the road, we had a couple retirees this year. We may not have that next year. You know, so I just want everybody to remember, we're, we're, we're tightening the budget. Two percent's great, but we may not have retirees every year like we did this year, okay? Just throw it out there, because I look, I look ten years down the road, so.
Uh, Mr. Sam, um, um, in what areas are the two retirees?
What's that?
What area are the two retirees?
Um, Bruce, can you answer that?
I'm happy to speak to that. Um, we had our school librarian retire in January, or not in January, right before, uh, December break. We have a para educator who is retiring this coming Thursday. We have an occupational therapist who is retiring at the end of the school year and an inclusion specialist, uh, who is retiring at the end of the school year.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
I just had a couple of budget com, uh, questions. Bruce, when you referred to the, the costs of the east side building and uh, the electrical coming off, the only other thing I think that was left on that list was custodial supplies. Is that specific to that building as well, or is that not? I think it's back a page or two, Brian.
No, the custodial supplies are related to the, um, elementary school itself. We, well, U twenty-eight, um, paid for the custodial at the, um, at the east side building, and actually that's a savings that's included in the custodial. I think it's somewhere, um, it's a east side maintenance somewhere down through there. It should reflect.
Looks like line ninety-seven.
It's actually down in ours, yeah, it's down in hmm, one of our lines, so, yeah, slide one oh two, Brian. Custodial salary. We actually had our own custodian over there. We paid for custodian.
Yeah, I was curious with all the other numbers in that section, pretty much dropping off, if that belonged there still or not.
Yeah, and I will take, I will reduce the thousand dollars I have in both the fuel and the power line ninety-three and eighty-eight to zero, if you're, if you're taking over, I can take them out of the budget, so. So that's where we are with the elementary.
One, one other question, was there any, I, I know we have a transportation contract, but with all the remote learning and everything else in the current year, was there any credit or anything that we saw?
Yeah, we're saving. I think, right now, because Mescus is giving us, uh, six percent discount. But they are doing, they are doing pickup and they're doing delivery of lunches uh, twice a week, so we're, we're getting uh, for the most part, service out of them, and, um, just so you're aware, we had a, a, a district placement up in one of our neighboring districts, and we were able to work out an arrangement where, um, uh, and right now it's not costing us anything, that the neighboring district had a bus run that went close to this, um, child's home, and they're actually picking him up and delivering to the neighboring district, so. Oh, you know, they're, it's been a good, uh, working relationship. We've tried to help them and they're, they're helping us this year, so. Um, Brian, if you wanna move along?
Uh, be, before you move to the next section, could I just say, uh, you have a, a quorum of the finance committees here anyways, I have to drop off for ten to fifteen minutes and I'll come back.
Okay.
And this is basically the breakdown, that was the breakdown of the, uh, U twenty-eight budget, so. Okay, so we'll move into the secondary budget. And, um, basically we'll talk about, um, I sent over a preliminary budget. And since I sent over the preliminary budget, I got actual billing from Gil Montague
And since I sent over the preliminary budget, I got actual billing from Gil Montague. And our mix of students has changed over there. And we have three more students that accounted as getting special needs services over there. And that increased our cost by about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the Irving secondary budget. However, we also had a reduction in regular ed students. So the offset is an increase of what I had of sixty thousand dollars. So originally I had proposed a thirty thousand dollar increase. And now we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars and I I feel real bad about this, but on the other hand, we have to educate the children we have. And so we have a significant group of students that need services. So.
So Bruce, the change is the ninety one thousand two seventy six?
Yes, originally I'd come in with a proposal was thirty and it increases it now to ninety one. And it's a six point seven percent increase, but in order to be a conscientious budgeter, I really have to include what we, what I believe to be the cost for the the special needs students down there. So.
Due to the additional, do you expect that that reduction in transportation is still accurate?
Yes, because literally we split the bill half and half, have secondary half elementary, because we technically have three buses, but but they they mingle, co-mingle the routes a little bit. So that's how we their transportation supplied by Cosmascos. So.
Okay. Questions on secondary?
I have none. Everything, everything else pretty much, well, actually, if you look, we had a a child we were transporting, we're no longer transporting. So I budgeted a twelve thousand dollar savings in the special needs transportation there too. So I have some savings, rest of it is what it is. Sorry.
Don't be sorry, Bruce. It is what it is. I mean.
Yeah, it is. You know, it's have to provide services and.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
I said, this is our, I have a question in regards to special ed.
Go ahead.
So the services that we're providing, I guess there's three additional kids that are going to be going. Is that to the seventh and above? Or is this, okay, and and there's a slight increase or whatever for this year coming. But it also covers what we've been doing up till now. So it's still part of some of the last year's budget and stuff. If the kids are being homeschooled and the special needs are not being met, I don't understand why the school skill, you know, stool, the the school department and the special needs department is still getting the same money they got the year before when we're doing homeschooling and how possibly could be the special needs kids, their needs being met and and to basically cover all that extra money that the schools are getting. And I just don't understand why there's an increase or even I know it's contracted and stuff, but if kids aren't getting the needs or the special needs that they're supposed to be getting, why is the school still getting money?
Lisa, Jen, would you like to speak to this? Or would you like me to? For the best of my knowledge, we are providing services for the children of special needs. And we're doing the best we can to provide all those services. And this, you have to remember also that this is next year's budget. And hopefully we will be fingers crossed back in person, in which case the delivery of services will be taking place. And it is, it is now, but you can't say we're not delivering services.
Right. I I think something, I don't know the students at the secondary level as the elementary school principal, but something, and I'm making an assumption, I'm going out on a limb based on ruling from Commissioner Riley. Early on, certain students with I E Ps with specific needs have been brought into schools earlier and are attending school in person, even though other students may not be. Again, I can't speak to the needs of these students because they're not in my building. But there's, there is a very good chance that these students are being brought in because they're in a special needs population. We had some students in the elementary school who we brought in earlier before all of the other kids based on directive from Commissioner Riley, the Commissioner of Education. So I'm making a guess. And even though our students, students at that school may be remote, we have some students in Irving Elementary School who are remote. But they, if we, if they have written in their I E P, they're going to have contracted services from an outside provider, we still have to provide those services whether a student is in person or whether a student is home due to the pandemic. So the school district is legally has to follow the I E P and we have to follow all of the services that are on there. So if there's a consultant that's coming in and working with teachers and staff, they're doing it virtually and they're still paying for that time. We have that at the elementary school. The only thing I can't speak to is transportation and busing because I don't know if these students are coming in, if that's still part of it, but every child continues to get what's on their I E P regardless of a pandemic or not.
Yep. Thank you, Lisa. I was I was just going to say that because remote learning at home is different from homeschooling. So if students are learning remotely, they still have and will receive services that are on their individualized plan.
Well, well, the concern I have is there's obviously some services with an I E P that there's just no way they can get on remote learning. And how I know that is I have an I a kid with an I E P that's been doing remote learning that has completely fell through the cracks and has learned nothing since last March. None of his services have been being met. And I had an issue with this. I took it up with the school department. I even called Brian, the town administrator with concerns saying that as a town, we are paying for these extra services that are not being, I understand that we don't have a magic wand that can make this pandemic go away. But I'm just concerned as a taxpayer, as somebody on the finance committee that we're paying for services that just are not being rendered. The I E P is not, you know, my I P for the individual that I was involved with was not in any way, shape or form being that. And I just hope that there's not a lot of these type of situations because I'm going to have real concern. This child that I'm talking about has an I E P and has individual things where he can step out and have one on one and all that. Well, all that can't happen when you're sitting at home. And obviously, as a parent, some of the stuff that's being taught and the way that it's being taught from a special ed teacher and stuff, I don't have those skills. I'm not a special ed teacher. So I just watched him since March of last year, just completely fall through the cracks and fall behind. And I just had a big meeting with the school and it, there's not one person in that big meeting I had that would agree that he had any of his services being met. And that's just one case that I know of. And I understand, I mean, there's a pandemic and all that. I get that, but I'm just worried that, you know, as a taxpayer, if we're paying more money and and some of these additional this and that, I mean, for me and for what I've seen from my home with my kid on special needs with an I E P, I just see this kid falling through the cracks and literally not only is his I E P not been met, it's he ain't even getting basic. He's literally just completely falling behind, couldn't keep up with the regular class. Wasn't in the I P would meet specially here and there or talk with somebody for a half hour on a screen, but that doesn't exactly take a kid that needs, you know, an individual educational plan and somehow meet his needs. None of his needs were met at all since last March. And they are addressing him. We're having a meeting. We're talking about the things we can do. Once school gets back in session, instead of him just having being an A, you know, like an an A or B, he's going to do A and B. So he's in there four days a week when school starts. That's fine. That's great. But since last March, we're, you know, going past the nine month mark. Actually, eleven months, maybe, but there was a couple of months, obviously, that would have been a a school break anyway. But he's just months and months and months behind. And it's almost like he has to pick up exactly where he left off. But yet the school continues to get all the money as if they were given this kid the I E P and all his needs were being met. And that is not one hundred percent not true. There's nothing on his I E P that's been met and or satisfactory in any way, shape or form. And that, if that's just me and you and I heard that somebody said there was three, is there only three from Irving that's on I E P? Or is there more?
There was actually. So in the secondary, I have eleven.
Eleven.
Full time equivalent. So so that may be twenty children, eleven full time equivalent.
And I'm, and I truly am not trying to be a thorn in anybody. I'm just truly concerned mostly about the child. But as a district, I mean, as 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 people in our town, we want to know that the money that we are using our tax dollars are at, you know, really educating our kids that are falling through the cracks. And this child, you know, one hundred percent, I just had a team meeting with everybody. And they all could see that the needs of this child was not being met in any way, shape or form. Okay. And my question is, if if the, if our district in our town is paying extra money for an I E P that is not being implemented and has not been implemented since last March, why as a town are we obligated to pay for something that was not done? And this is at a team meeting with eight, nine, ten people in there and everybody in there has agreed that the needs for this child has not been met in any way, shape or form. But yet the town of Irving is paying for this kid's education that sits in, you know, a room every day. And just, he's basically a part of a class. And he's watching other students because he's completely disengaged. There's no one on one with a power, anybody to be giving him the help that he needs. And this is a kid that is probably, he's in seventh grade. I don't want to, obviously can't go into details, but he's in seventh grade and he's at about a third grade level across the board.
And I I couldn't speak to specifics, but as part of our tuition agreement with Gil Montague, Gil Montague is programmatically responsible. And so they would be the ones that would be addressing some of the issues you're discussing. And it sounds like you're advocating for that to happen.
Yes. But obviously, my concern is if I'm dealing, if if me personally, I'm dealing with this with one child. My concern is, is, is how we're seeing the I E Ps being met since last March, since there's has not been any in school learning other than the elementary from kids that are seventh grade and above. You know, realistically, if we have eleven kids that have I E Ps, how much of these I E Ps are actually being met? What over and above is the school doing to make sure these individuals are getting taken care of? Because my child's never went and been in the school in any case. Okay. And he is there. I couldn't think of another child that needs services more than he needs them. And I'm just feeling like as a, even as a taxpayer and as a person on the finance committee, as a person involved with towns, I'm just concerned that we're paying for eleven students that if they're getting the same education that the the child that I'm dealing with in I E P means that he's just sitting at a screen and being lost and not getting the needs that, you know, the I E P needs. And my curiosity is out of eleven kids that are in Irving, my town, our town, I would like, I mean, is there any way that we can get an update to see how all of these kids with an I E P? How much of the percentage of the I E P has been being met? Because that's a whole lot of money, a whole lot of money for eleven kids.
Yep. I I hear that. As I said, Gil Montague remains programmatically responsible as part of the tuition agreement. And I'm not sure what kind of information I could share regarding a confidential individualized education plan. And because we're not programmatically responsible, I don't know how much information that could be shared with the superintendent's office.
Right. Well, I'm just, I mean, if there's eleven kids, I'll, I'm not talking about any, anything specific, but hey, out of eleven kids, you know, fifty percent of them are meeting seventy five percent of their I E P. That would be enough for me, you know, and it's pretty, that's pretty general. Enough for me to know that some services are being met here. If the school district, I mean, or Irving is paying the school district large and extra amounts of money to reach I E Ps that are not being met, that's really not fair to the kids and really not fair to the taxpayers, really not fair to the town of Irving.
Oh, this is Eric Sam. How are you? I'm glad you brought this to our attention and let me make a phone call. I mean, I, obviously, we can't, we're not going to get our money back, but I understand what you're trying to say. But if I could just maybe tomorrow, call the superintendent over there. Is it Bruce or what's his name over there?
For the union to eight?
No.
Ryan Beck.
Right. And just, just chat with him for a little bit about this. I mean, we, the problem with Irving, we don't have any vote over there, but we do have we can talk because we do give them a lot of money. So I'm glad you brought this to our attention. Let us look into it. You know, I hear what you're saying.
That would make me happy. I just want to, I just don't want to have, you know, our kids slipping through the crack. And I understand, I truly do that we're in a pandemic. Things are going to be different and we got to work around them, et cetera. But I just don't want a situation where like I just had a big meeting and and, you know, I'm sorry, this this kid, this individual here, I, you know, obviously I can't say no. I know for sure as an adju, you know, his educational advocate, someone that's been involved in his life for three and a half years knows that none of his educational needs are being that being met. We had a big meeting about it. We are, now I have to admit, we had a meeting and we're going to try to tackle some of these things. And it ain't like people ain't working on it. Okay, don't get me, they are working on it. But I'm just saying, we're almost at a year later. And 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 the bar hasn't been moved for him, you know what I mean? And here we are talking about next year's budget. And I P stuff. And I just feel like, wow, like exactly what you said, we're, we're paying a lot of money. And I just want to know that Irving tax dollars are being used in a way to educate our children. And if someone's falling through the cracks, that we need to do what we got to do to make sure that they're not if we're paying this kind of money.
First of all, I'm I'm glad you're having these meetings. I mean, that's the first step and I'm, and hopefully things improve. But I will personally call him and set up a a quick meeting with him and just let him know our concerns about the the kids falling through the cracks during this crisis. Okay?
I thank you.
Any other secondary budget questions? Thank you for taking that, Eric, and.
I'll report back to Brian.
I'll be more than glad to work with you too, Eric, and see what we can do.
Okay, thank you, Bruce.
Yeah, obviously, it's about the education and not the money, but we don't want to throw good money after bad if it's not doing what it's there for.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Anything further, gentlemen? Ladies?
Do we have a tech school?
We do. That's up next. Yep, that's coming up right after this. If there's no further questions for secondary, then we will move into tech school. If there's no further questions for secondary, then we will move into tech school. As you can see, Martin might, I've seen this here, and then, I'm not sure if.
Superintendent Mark and Martin was online earlier, I, he might have fallen off the line. Um, he had a PowerPoint presentation ready, but I'm not so sure, we've done a ton of our meetings on Zoom. So I'm not so sure, uh, he would have been able to display it on your, your platform here or not. But I am Russ Cobus, the Business Manager of Franklin County Tech. Um, and let me know, and I can do a brief, at least a brief verbal, oh, there we go, a presentation on our budget.
Brian, you are muted.
Want me to proceed forward?
I was just explaining that, uh, I'm happy to, to maneuver through the slides of the, the budget you sent, but if Superintendent Martin returns um, and you need, uh, control of the, the presenter functions, just let me know, and you can, you or the superintendent can take us through your presentation. I don't mind doing this on, on our end if, if that's helpful.
Oh, that, that's, that'll work out fine. If you wanna flip to the next screen.
Absolutely.
And I'll walk you guys, I'll give you the, the ten-minute version here of our budget. Um, this page represents our funding sources and uses. Top half of the screen is, uh, all the funds we have coming in to balance our budget, bottom half of the screen is how, uh, we're spending the money and the general functional categories that we use to report out to the, to the Department of Ed. Um, this year, on the revenue side, we are assessing our towns on average a two-point-five percent increase in town assessments from the previous years. Uh, each town's assessment will vary based on the number of children they're sending here to Franklin County Tech. Uh, but we generally keep our increases in our town assessments below the average of the municipal revenue growth factor, which is a target that we use, uh, on our, on our side for doing town assessments. Um, your capital assessments, uh, in total went down slightly, that's a fluctuating, it's not a straight-line amortization schedule like our home mortgages, uh, but it's a bond loan that's out there. And, um, we'll take a look at your individual capital assessment a few slides from now. Chapter seventy-eight, we are a school in growth mode, we have approximately a ten percent increase, nine-point-six percent increase in enrollment this year from last year, and about a fifteen percent increase over the last two years. So Franklin Tech is growing, and that's why you're seeing, uh, represented on this page, uh, a budget that is also growing. Um, if you remember several years back, if any of you, uh, had us, uh, invited to your finance committee meeting, we were shrinking our school, shrinking our budgets, because our enrollment was shrinking. Well, now we're in full growth mode, and we're starting to move forward from there. Most of the money from the top, the sources side of our funding is invested in the instructional services end of our budget. So you'll notice down below, uh, on the second half of this page, instructional services went up about four hundred, three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollars. So that's, we're investing money back into instructors. We have a guidance council that we're looking to hire to add on, we have an English slash, uh, social studies teacher that we'll look at to add on to our, uh, to our staff. So we have staff that's growing also. Um, any questions on this page? If not, I will, I will have, you can flip to the next screen, Brian. Uh, I want you to flip, here's some pretty charts, but let's flip past the two charts, I think, one more. And here.
There we go.
Gonna say, this is, this is the screen you're probably most interested in, because this has the dollars on it. Uh, for the town of Irving, um, you've got an enrollment of twenty-seven students. And I believe that, let's see, represents a one, one student increase from last year. So last year, your budget was based on, or our budget was based on twenty-six of your students, this year it's twenty-seven. Um, if you see going across, the assessment for Irving is four hundred and eighty-four thousand, five thirty-four. That's our, um, assessment for you all. We got a assessment per pupil, in the yellow column, you'll notice that varies, um, pretty drastically between our nineteen-member towns, and it's based on the state formula. Um, their perceived wealth of your town, um, so you'll see some of our towns, and you're one of them that's at the max of seventeen thousand, nine forty-six per pupil. Other towns, um, go as low as the town of Orange at seventy-eight hundred. That's not something Franklin County Tech controls, what we can control in our district formula is a straight per pupil, um, calculation for our member town. So this gets skewed by the state formula, and that's represented in the orange minimum contribution formula. Uh, if you flip one more screen, Brian. Here, it gives you a little trend analysis of where you've been, so if you look down at the town of Irving, you'll see the enrollment, again, went from twenty-six to twenty-seven. Cruise across the page to the right, and you'll see your town, uh, assessment for Franklin County Tech. Even though you went up one student, you are actually going down in the assessment by, uh, three to four grand. So, good news for Irving, um, again, the driving factor in our, our, uh, formula is the state's minimum contribution. Um, and the state must have been a little kinder to you than it was in years past. Uh, we also have some enrollment growth, so if you were staying fairly steady enrollment-wise, um, we'll see, like, our towns of, uh, Greenfield had twenty-three more students. So they're picking up more of the slack on, um, on the charges for, for assessments across the board. Uh, so for the most part, uh, you can flip one more screen, Brian, I won't pick up too much of your time. And here's the capital assessments. Of the fifty percent of the formulas based on the US Census, the other fifty percent of the formulas based on equalized valuation. And again, with the town of Irving, they, they assume you guys have a ton of money on the equalized valuation side. So you'll see that your capital assessment's about fourteen thousand, three seventy-six. I just had a meeting with, uh, Rick Martin and I had a meeting with the town of Northfield earlier tonight, and you can see their capital assessment's down at ten thousand, nine forty-three. So you're, you're picking up, uh, a fair share, probably more than a fair share of your capital assessment. Uh, but that's driven by a formula that was baked into our district agreement that all our member towns, um, signed off on. And then the, uh, Brian has the rest of our budget book, which is a detailed line item budget. If, um, I don't wanna take up much of your time tonight, but if any members see anything in our detailed budget that you have questions on, if you relay them to Brian, and Brian can probably relay them to me fairly quickly, and we can get answers for you, uh, as you see fit. Any questions on my back-of-the-match book presentation?
Do you, uh, can know if the, um, capital assessment is an increase or decrease year-over-year for Irving?
Uh, I will look at your last year's budget.
It was close to what we budgeted last year.
Was it? Yeah, yeah, for fifteen thousand, oh eighty-four was last year, so you, you dropped a little bit. So on both the capital side and the operating side, your, your assessments will be dropping a little bit. Until we can grab some more kids from Irving, hopefully, next year.
Hard to argue with increased enrollment and decreased costs, so.
That, that's, that's a good trend, I'm glad you're one of our early found to present to, it's good to get a few of these good, good feeling ones out of the way.
Well, just for the, for the rest of the group, the, the bad side of that is our EQV, if I recall reading it correctly, in Franklin County, we are second only to Greenfield. So, lucky us. We are higher than Montague, Orange, et cetera, so, yeah, thank you to the state, but anyway.
That, that's, that's quite a formula they work out. We have eighteen hundred people, Greenfield has seventeen thousand people, the one that's even, uh, remotely, well, one that's close to us, an equalized evaluation is Montague with eighty-four hundred people. So that's what, you know, four and a half, five times our population with the same amount, lucky us.
Yep. Uh, any questions for Russ?
Brian, thank you for scrambling and getting that, uh, I know I just emailed out the budget book to you a short while ago, so you did a tremendous job putting that back up for us, thank you.
Thank you to you and the superintendent for, uh, making us your second meeting of the night, so thank you.
Yeah, and, uh, I, you know, there may be some questions as we review the detail, and we'll, we'll get them to you if there are. And, uh, if there's an additional presentation that, that Superintendent Martin would like to share either in person or, or send us just for offline review, we would welcome that as well.
Thank you very much, we are in pretty regular contact with Brian, so we will, uh, we will certainly be available to answer any questions if he flips some our way.
Sounds great. Thank you, Russ.
Thank you all, have a good evening.
I think that's all of your education budgets for tonight.
I think it is. Uh, well, thank you to the school committee and Superintendent Bruce, and Franklin Tech for joining us and going through the budgets. If the school committee doesn't have anything else for us, I will make a motion to adjourn the joint meeting with the school committee. All in favor?
Can I just get the second most? Oh, thank you.
Before we leave, Brian, can you give me a call tomorrow sometime?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you all very much, um, and thanks to everybody who put these budgets together, appreciate it.
All in favor, I just need a quick vote. Aye.
Aye.
The online format, uh, we'll get there. Thank you. Finance committee.
Everybody be safe, please. You too. Take care.
Okay, um, think how we started the night with, uh, with a new topic, and, uh, just wanted to make sure you all got a minute to hear it as well. The discussion of the Church Street Bridge over Key Up Brook.
Want me to put that back on the screen?
Sure. I don't really wanna see it anymore, but you won't want to share it with them. So, DOT Bridge Division came out and did a, an assessment of the bridge, which they do on a regular basis, and they have preemptively notified us that we will get an official notice of, um, derating of that bridge. The short version is, they're only going to rate it to allow, um, one lane of traffic at a time. So basically, it's gonna be half what it is today. The understanding is that they're not derating the current weight limits, they're just saying it can't be bi-directional traffic. Or we can close the bridge entirely, because of the continued degradation in the bridge. This is a topic that the town has been, you know, working on off and on every few years, from my understanding, DOT says it's theirs, then they say it's ours. Currently, they're saying it's ours.
Is it something we could, uh, like, make one of those things they did in Shelburne, like, make a, like a flowered bridge for walking over for pedestrians?
You know, I heard that somewhere before, and I don't know if it was in a meeting or not, but it's a great idea, but, uh.
I don't wanna throw anybody under the bus, but, uh, Linda Benbury on our capital planning committee, having a wonderful idea for that bridge.
There's no anonymity, sorry, Linda.
Sorry, Linda.
Statue too?
Water, water fountain. Pumps up from the brook, nice fountain runs year-round, hey.
Ice sculpture in the winter, uh, anyway. I wanted to let all of you know, because obviously, this is not gonna be an expensive project, um, at the next capital planning committee meeting. Let them know, they had been discussing it as, as something to start looking at, and the town did get some engineering proposals for preliminary work to get probable costs and stuff like that. Prior to this notice, obviously, now this changes the priority of this project, so we're gonna have to revisit. What we're doing and how we're doing it, the first thing that I think we need to do is figure out how we're going to fund the engineering work, because that's the first step. As we discussed earlier, probably the most optimistic is that this is eighteen months away to, to building it, at best. Um, give or take. Could be even longer, we still have to find funding, it is probably a more than a million-dollar project, et cetera. But we don't have probable counts, but based on it. And whatever design we come up with, DOT, not only locally, but also in Boston, has to sign off on the bridge because it's over twenty feet. Et cetera, et cetera, so there's a lot of factors here. Roughly, the engineering cost so far is, is around two hundred thousand dollars, so.
Wow, that's a lot of money.
And that's just to figure out how much money it's going to cost us.
Just to clarify.
To be fair, but, yeah, go ahead, Brian, it's more than just, but.
You have the engineering proposal that I, I sent to you in your emails, um, it, the proposal for approximately two hundred thousand dollars, uh, that the chairman's discussing is everything from conceptual, through environmental permitting, the public process, all of the, the pieces that we need to do with Mast dot, and then the actual bid documents, the bidding process and construction administration, so the totality of it is, is approximately two hundred thousand. Um, we could break that up into smaller, uh, phases, if that made sense to you all. Um, but yes, the total engineering is approximately two hundred thousand.
Is it really, like, necessary to have that bridge on Church Street? Why can't we just go without the bridge? And just go away with the bridge and just have Church Street? I mean, I don't get the importance of that bridge.
Well, uh, we've discussed that some today, also with DOT and with Public Safety and Public Works. Uh, if we close the bridge, then all of that traffic is going up North Street or High Street. High Street has another bridge on it, which has a difficult approach and angles, and, and I think its ratings are also limited. So that's not a, a realistic, um, redirection of all the traffic that goes up that road today. Uh, and North Street introduces a multitude of concerns about the, frankly, just the width of the road, but also, um, turning on to it, when westbound off of Route Two, turning off of it, onto Route Two in either direction. We've had multiple motor vehicle accidents in the past, and we would have more if we forced more traffic in that direction. Any kind of larger vehicle has to cross into the eastbound lane to make a right turn onto North Street. It would be difficult to move even emergency apparatus on a right turn up north without crossing not only the eastbound, but taking up the entire of North Street to make that turn, so there's all kinds of traffic flow issues if we just had North Street. We even talked about potentially putting a temporary traffic light in on Route Two, uh, in front of North Street to allow that. That would require Boston to approve having one of those on Route Two in that area. We have to have warning signs, you know, up near Mountain Road or Gary Street, as well as, um, near High Street to, you know, warn of traffic, because we would back up very far, very quickly in that area. The traffic engineer, there's, there's hundred different problems we proposed for every possible path we had here. Idea to put up, um, potentially put up, uh, traffic lights on Church and North and have one-way, um, alternating bi-directional traffic going over the bridge as the interim step until we can replace the bridge. We're gonna look at that traffic pattern and what that would look like, and if it's feasible for large vehicles, et cetera, later this week. DOT didn't have any concerns other than they need an engineer to review it. Doesn't mean it's the right decision, doesn't mean this is the direction we're gonna go. However, when we get the official notice about this, which is probably only days away, we have two weeks to go down to one lane or close the bridge. Very short timeline to make a immediate adjustment, and then obviously we have the long-term problem of the bridge itself.
Yeah, I was wondering, can we turn each street into a one-way street?
Right.
Out of light?
So that was discussed as well. I think the initial proposal DOT was to make, was it North Street, the southbound?
Right.
Street, the northbound? We have concerns about people leaving North Street and whether or not we'd need a traffic light for safety because of the, I think the lines of sight at North, not only you almost have to pull out into Route 2 to see past the businesses, because there's very little room for the current. The sightlines are probably less than 100 feet in each direction, so we potentially have to put a traffic light in to allow traffic to exit safely. And trucks would do still come down there, even though we put a traffic exclusion in, and those vehicles would, you know, obviously have trouble even accident period regardless of a traffic light or not. So then we talked about switching it and having Church Street southbound and North be the northbound. Again, no one can turn onto North easily, and anything larger than a small car from the westbound lane without crossing, you know, without taking up most of the road. And anything larger would actually need to cross into eastbound traffic to make the turn, so even if it was only one way. Concerns about, you know, backing up traffic on Route 2, even at Church Street, so. Still potentially needing a traffic light there if we did.
Have we ever considered replacing those bridges with box culverts instead of bridges?
I don't know if that would be possible with the height of the existing bridge at Church Street, but that's something that would be discussed with the engineers. My understanding is construction-wise, the width of this bridge is not much larger than a box culvert. So there may be some construction pieces of this that have similar aspects. A lot of this would be built offsite, precast, and brought to the site.
So obviously, we don't have answers right now. We're going to have to come up with a short-term plan quickly, and we're working on those options and trying to flesh out all the concerns that are involved between traffic flow and public safety. Anything we do right now, we have to do something. Anything we do is going to have impact to traffic to the neighborhood of North Street. And unfortunately, it's not a short process to get the bridge repaired permanently, so. I guess financially, the other piece, obviously, there's going to be some cost if we have to purchase traffic lights and things like that. But the other piece is finding the money to begin the engineering, so we can get a handle on what is the whole thing going to be in the long term, and then how do we fund it? Is there grants, et cetera, and begin those investigations? We need to start talking about having an STM soon, so if we don't have accounts or we have enough, you know, we have enough in free cash or some other place, it probably makes sense to put an article on to move money over and get this started as soon as possible, rather than waiting until July 1, based on where we are now, in my opinion. So we're also exploring that, and in our next meeting, I think we had planned to begin to talk about STM. So we'll put a draft together if, you know, where money would come from to begin this. And we start looking at the total financial picture, we may have to reevaluate what we're moving forward for projects this year.
Yeah.
For capital, et cetera, in FY '22, because of this and/or just stating for the potential cost of the bridge replacement itself.
On the topic of your next joint meeting on the 22nd, the plan, as I understand it, is to have a review of the FY '22 budget requests as they've been presented and discussed over the last few months, along with our current revenue projections for your consideration, as well as the STM draft for your consideration. Is that everybody else's understanding of what you want to do on the 22nd?
Yes.
Okay.
I wonder if capital should meet, or just to discuss this and see if there's anything we feel comfortable changing around or maybe removing or adding based on this request, if we don't have free cash or another funding source. The other thing I will just add for the powers that be, I often hear it talked about as Church and North, but it's actually Church, North, and High, because whatever you do to those two streets, you're going to push up here to High Street. So I would just ask, in whatever configuration is being thought of and being looked at, that High Street is really taken into consideration. We don't see a ton of traffic, but we do have a fair share of rigs that come up this street. We also are a street that is very child-heavy. I have five children that live across the street from me, you know, in one home. So I would just hate to see a real influx of traffic get pushed up this route. So I would just really ask if those three streets could be looked at holistically and how they will all be affected, not just Church and North from this.
And to that point, Mountain Road is another concern about impacts. GPS, once we force somebody off of one street, their GPS recalculates and tries to take the next street. So you're right, we need to think about all of Irving Center.
Yeah.
And all four streets did come up in the DOT discussion earlier today, because Public Safety had advised, you know, seeing some of that traffic flow shift to Mountain Road already with the truck exclusion as they try to enforce it, or just out-of-town vehicles heading up that street, so. All four were discussed, and I think they're part of it. The other piece, just for you all to understand, I even asked the question, because at some point, we'll have to close it to repair it. So there is a period where it's going to be closed, even if we don't decide to do that until it's fixed. So that was discussed a little bit, and I asked a question about, you know, what if we made those roads local only? All of them, all four of them, really. I don't know if we could on Mountain. We didn't really talk about that. I didn't really get a lot of feedback from DOT on what their thoughts were. But obviously, it's a really large impact if we shift everyone out to 63 to get north or back to 78. I think that's probably the two options if we did that. So, you know, it was asked, we didn't go very far with that, but that was brought up as well.
Right.
Another reason to consider the whole thing, as Deb mentioned about North Church and High, is the bridge that goes from North Street up to Laurel Lake. If you go up High Street, you want to get out of there, either go through the state forest, which I don't think you're going to do, or they're going to take a left and go over that bridge, which may or may not, I don't know the state of repair of that bridge, but it's, we don't want to destroy that either.
To that point, Dan, you're right. The chairman discussed that concern that this could push traffic on to that bridge. And not that our counterparts at DOT, they're not obviously residents, and they don't always see the impacts, and they have their data and their maps that they're looking at to help guide these decisions. But we were trying to articulate to the best of our ability the impacts that you all experienced during the tourist season. So the ski seasons, the foliage seasons, when Laurel Lakes opened and the campers are back. So we were trying to articulate that the tourists have an impact on the residents, not only just the north-south GPS cut-through that we experience here. So there's a lot of people being forced through these narrow residential streets, and this is going to have a significant impact, and we have to be very thoughtful about that. So you're absolutely right.
Currently, that bridge is in better shape than the Church Street Bridge, fortunately, but I don't know about the rating. And obviously, if we put that volume of traffic, that's not what it has seen historically, so. Or crackling or something. Thank you. The. Yeah, obviously, this topic is going to be something that we're going to jointly discuss, along with capital, four times before it's passed us. But I wanted to bring it up, as soon as we'd heard. This is kind of proactive advisement from our local office. The official notice isn't here yet, so we've given a little bit extra time to work on it than normal, the normal two weeks at the end. And I had the opportunity to bring you all up to speed as much as we know so far, so that's where we are now.
All right, so I will prepare all of your materials for the 22nd. And then.
The other two topics, I think, that we had on the list that we needed to wrap up, and maybe we weren't, maybe we were discussing them next meeting, but I thought it was tonight, was the police department budget and whether we had wanted to make a decision to level fund or go ahead with the reduction based on all the changes and fluctuations this year. And then finishing out this type of conversation, I think there's a view that we didn't analyze yet, if I recall.
Do you want me to pull back all of the discussion that we've had on those topics and send that out to everybody for your review over the next week? And I can do whatever research ThinkCom or select what members want done, so that you can have that fuller conversation?
I mean, that's fine with me. I'll defend them, Bill. In terms of the total budget picture, I think that's some of the last few open items, right, that we have to make decisions on to get the total picture.
Correct. What I can do is pull together, I know I outlined those outstanding conversations from a memo probably back in January, so I can pull that back up to the surface and get that out to all of you and pull the data from the county on lake positions. And I will already revise the budget document, but I will update it with the changes. The school wasn't included before. The tech school wasn't included. I'll put all of those pieces in, and I will start to draft out the revenue section, so you can start to see that comparison. And I'll put the capital plan as it was currently presented in the budget. And then, as you all consider this project request and how you want to approach it, I will include what your current free cash is, along with our revenue projections. So hopefully, that gives you enough information to focus your questions and discussion.
That sounds good, Brian. Thank you.
Yeah.
Ben, maybe if you want to see if the capital committee wants to meet next week at some point to discuss the bridge, and then maybe look back over the list and see if they have any opinion or recommendations. By then, I think we'll have a better understanding on what sources we have for this 295,000 engineering cost. So I don't know if you want to wait until we can get that to you and let you know if we think we have places to cover it, or if we just want to schedule something to at least bring them up to speed.
I think we usually have our capital meetings on Wednesdays, so I don't see any problem with scheduling something for next Wednesday. There should be plenty of time to get everything ready by then. Do you think?
Check the calendar, but it sounds, it could be open. My calendar looks okay. Let me just check one more. As of right now, the 17th looks open for a public meeting.
Okay.
Do you want me to send out a meeting invite to the capital planning?
Yeah, that would be great. Usually, is it 6:30, right, not 7?
6:30.
Yeah, so 6:30 on the 17th, and that sounds good to me. What do you think, Jacob?
Thanks for me.
Yeah, I'm good. At least get up to speed on what this is, and there's something we need to adjust. I think they need to start talking about it, or we, I guess, need to start talking about it as well.
Okay, I will send that out. Thank you. Of course, thank you all.
Neil, anything else to think on this for us?
I got to admit, this threw me for a bit of a loop, because I've been thinking about it, and I'm going, there's got to be an easy solution to this, and there is no easy solution to this.
No. If anyone has an epiphany, I welcome them, and so does Brian and Bill and all of us. So please reach out. If you have one and wake up at 2:00 AM, I'll even take the call if it's that good.
I'm just going to throw my vote for Linda's whiskey bar plan, and that's all I'm going to say.
Bar plan. Not driving cars to the whiskey bar, are we, Deb?
Nice tourist attraction, but I don't think it's going to solve our traffic problems.
Ah, tourist attraction, that's.
Introduce some new ones.
Just get rid of that blacktop. Go back to Oh Natural.
Yeah, flowers on one side, whiskey bar on the other side. That was Linda's plan, so I'm all for it.
Wait till she hears.
Are we going to have to go out for an hour, a request for proposal, since we get the tie and bond approval of the cost?
When you go to bridge construction?
Yes.
Yes, we will have to do, we'll have to issue probably an IFB, so you'll go with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And that would be under chapter 3039M, so it's a public works construction, so it's a little more straightforward. So yes, we will have to do that. I'm anticipating at least four weeks for the bidding process. We need a minimum two weeks to advertise. You're going to want to have a site visit with potential contractors. You're going to want to give them a couple of days to ask their questions and for the engineers to respond, and then open the sealed bids. So when you do all of that, it's at least 30 days to do that work. So yeah, factoring in that, plus the construction, is where we got to the timeline that the chairman discussed.
Do you have any concerns with working off the Western Sampson proposal for the engineering? Or are you comfortable with doing that? We don't have to go out for procurement for engineering. We can just take that if we're happy with their work.
Right. That's true.
And we don't have to decide tonight, Bill, but we can at least start that number as our.
Correct.
You know, placeholder for what we need to fund for engineering.
Right.
I was just thinking that one of the things we might want to add to that discussion with capital and finances, whether to look at a loan, a borrowing for this for this work to take place.
Okay.
Substantial.
We're going to look at all your financing options that would obviously include borrowing, and I'm going to try to see what potential funding resources the state or the federal government may provide for a bridge like this, where we're too large in terms of deck width for what they call the Small Bridge Program, which there's usually funding sources available every year for that. But that doesn't mean there aren't programs that we can't apply for. So we're going to put together a list of what those opportunities are in their timelines to see if we can get enough done with the engineering process to meet those application deadlines. So we're going to explore all your financing options for you.
And just from a capital standpoint, I guess my question is more for Jake and Bill. Am I to, or am I understanding you gentlemen correctly, that this is a project you feel needs to happen immediately and cannot be pushed off?
I hear you. I'm just not sure. Well, I can tell you that my opinion of what we should do next is just close it and work from there to shut the bridge down. Almost every option that we look at, there's going to be some real serious impacts to other areas and. Al- almost every option that we look at, there's going to be some some real serious impacts to to other areas and. And and so we we just have to figure out which is the. Which presents the least. Amount of impact to the community. I I think we all want to see it happen as soon as possible. Rather than delay it. I I think any delay, we would be talking probably about a year plus.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't think the the community is going to be able to take that that long of a. A a time period to. To go by, so. I think it's important we do it as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Yeah, I I second what Bill said, unless Ben wakes up with that wonderful plan and we can keep it closed forever, maybe, then I I think. Sooner than later is where we live right now. The. The one thing I think I left out, Bill had asked the question earlier, what's the timeline to doing this? You know, best case. Assuming money is not not a holdup, right? And I think according to Brian, we're talking eight, ten months of permitting, weapons, engineering, design, et cetera, before we could go out to bed. So. I mean, that puts us best case probably next. Summer because likely we have to build it around the river during spring. So, you know, you're talking twelve, fourteen, sixteen months away is probably the best case, but if we go much further, we're talking a year and a, you know, another year.
Right.
Anyway, do it sooner. I think we have to.
Right.
So the community, community build a bridge for Whiskies out. You're gonna have to move on.
I took, I got one word for you, rotary. That's what we.
What is it?
Rotary. Just cross the bridge. I mean, cross the the brook twice.
Yeah. Perfect.
Yeah, we'll we'll come. I I can solve things.
You know, Army Corps bridges, we'll just roll them across and off we go.
Hey, Ben, can we put Jake's statue in the middle of the rotary?
Bam. No comment, Deb, no comment on that. I'm making no comments on statuary at this point.
Feel like I'm going to be memorialized because of this bridge and not in a good way. Anyway. All right. On a serious note, though, yes, I think we got to do everything we can as quick as we can, but still, it's probably at least a year.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right. Bill, do you have anything else for Fincon?
I'm all set.
Okay. Well, thank you all, and we will see you on the twenty second. At seven PM again. Make a motion to adjourn the joint meeting with Fincon and resume the select board meeting.
Second.
Hi.
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 Thank you all.
Bye.
Thank you.
Good day, people. Stay safe.
Good night.
Good night, Joe. Okay. That was a whole lot, and we haven't gotten to the top yet.
That was a lot in two hours.
Yeah, it was. Kind of moved to our own by. Okay, back to the top, a discussion regarding COVID nineteen. I think there's a few updates. Capacity has is increasing or increased today to forty percent. Is that right for businesses?
Need to verify that, but I do think that that was starting to shift again.
Okay.
Capacity in the region for vaccinations is also increasing.
So that was the even better.
Yeah.
Yeah. My understanding was been a lot of targeted work to get the eligible senior population. Appointments and get them there and and that's progressing very well for Irving and for surrounding communities. So. It's great. Work by the senior center and shine and a bunch of other. Town and and local entities, and we appreciate all that work. I think.
Me up and take me there?
Paula is coordinating to that point. She's coordinating anybody who falls into the current eligibility of seventy-five and older. And and working to get them registered, and if there's issues with transportation, troubleshooting what those challenges are. And as we shift down to the next group of eligible seniors, she's going to continue that that process. So so if transportation is a concern for anybody in Irving, we can try to help troubleshoot what that what that may look like. Obviously, every case is is a little more unique, so to the chairman's point, Paula and and. The shine coordinator is is doing a a good job of trying to meet those needs and and connect to resources, so.
And they're and they're still actively trying to work on on plans and arrangements for homebound seniors and. You know, and individuals in general who would struggle to get to any site, so that's still in the works as well.
Right. And today, I know Chief Wonka discussed it. Last week, and I was able to get it onto the website and on the social media today. So the the link to the state vaccination site where people can put in, there's a codes and search. Within a certain radius, there's also an interactive map option to show you where there's availability in the state. So that's now on the town website and on social media as well.
It is ramping up, and it's great to see. No new updates on library construction project?
Only that we're still just trying to deal with any issues related to the solar field. Resources looking into it on their end, and we are getting ready to schedule our warranty walkthrough this month. So I think we're we're nearing. The end of our to-do list, and we're ready for that walkthrough.
Excellent. As we heard a little bit in the very beginning of the call, we're on distraction street. The only update is the survey crew has been out there to to do their work, and so we should have some. Further details and and report back hopefully in the next, or hopefully by the next meeting on the twenty second.
Correct. Yep.
Please, police chief position search. Progressing, you know, still working actively on that timeline and interviews begin this week, so. They're. They're progressing well.
Can I ask if you all have had a chance to think about when you want to schedule the final interviews? The week of the twenty second?
We got a twenty second works for me.
Yeah, I think we kind of said it last week. I don't think it should be on the same night as our regular business, so.
Right.
Yeah. Same night. Or if you want to do it during the day, I don't know if if you have a preference, though, we could do Saturdays is the other option.
Yeah, I I don't have a preference. I mean, Saturday, Saturday would work for me as well, so. Preferably daytime.
You're thinking about Saturday, the twentieth?
Well, actually, I'm feeling like that's maybe a little rushed. We haven't talked about questions. We haven't gone through format. I mean, there's still. You know, we get to develop questions ourselves. I know the the screening committee has done, but we haven't. I know the screening committee has some recommendations or ideas on questions that they didn't do. They chose not to do in screening, but we may want to do in our interview. And I know they had asked the question, and I advised we hadn't decided yet on whether or not we were going to do in-person interviews. You know, with full distancing, and then how do we make them public? And and there's all those kind of logistic questions. So I'm not saying I want to slow down the process, but. I don't know what you think, but I'm feeling like the week of the twenty second feels a little rushed, like we have some work of our own to maybe get ready to do it.
Yep. No, that's fine. I mean, I I. I guess I just don't want to slow down the process anymore than we have to, but. If we have work we need to do, we want to make it a. A good process, not a. One that that has some flaws and has some issues or problems, so. I I have no problem putting that timeline out. Until we completed what we need to do.
And I wouldn't want to wait long, maybe the following week. And I'm thinking, you know, if we need to do a bridge meet, if we need to do a board meeting next week, which we don't have scheduled as the Monday holiday. Because of the bridge, maybe within we could start the conversation about. What's the format? What's the questions? Maybe maybe those are the two topics if we need to have a meeting. And if not. I mean, on the twenty second, if for some reason we can't, we can maybe find another night that week to specifically talk about that, get that plan in place, and then then we'll be prepared to to schedule on the following week.
Can the can the institute? Produce some questions for us?
Yes, we have. We have some draft questions that the the screening committee has recommended for your consideration, as well as some recommendations from the Collin Center. So. I can get that over to the two of you for your consideration to at least start your review, and if. If you have any specific questions that you think are missing, if you want to let me know, I can compile all of that into one list for whatever meeting you put that on for the next agenda. And then the two of you can hopefully refine those questions to something you feel. Represents what you want that final interview to look like.
Okay.
And in terms of whether or not you want to do a Zoom or a or a in-person interview. I mean, obviously, there's drawbacks and and potential benefits of doing either. So whatever the two of you decide, we'll make happen with the the necessary protocols. So just whatever your preferences will will do.
Okay. Well. Yeah, I would ask the. The institute to come, you know, provide some of that information maybe by Friday or 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 so. They may be waiting until the interviews have completed to 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 wrap those up if that drives some some recommendations on questions, you know, so. Hopefully, we'll have those by the end of the week, and then. Next week or on the twenty second, we'll we'll have a discussion about questions and format. You know, in person, when are we doing them, and we'll finalize all that. By the twenty second, I would tentatively say we could finalize it by then, and hopefully be doing it the following week.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, do we have any idea how many candidates are going to make that cutoff?
Interviews have not started yet, so I would say no.
Okay.
We may. We may have that by next week, I would expect. I would expect they're going to come, you know, assuming there's not any delays, but we have more than a week, you know, before the next meeting. So. I think the the screening committee tentatively planned to hopefully have recommendations by the twenty second, so. I think we'll likely have recommendations that night of of what the pool will be, and then we can talk through questions and logistics, and we'll be at that stage of hopefully getting ready to do the. The next round of interviews.
Correct.
Okay. No new updates on the dryer, the sludge dryer project for P O T W number two?
No.
We went over budget. Issuance of twenty twenty-one business licenses. Okay. So I think at your last meeting, I let you know that we had a few businesses that we were following up with. And. It's in here somewhere. Why can't I not just pull up the list? Give me one second. I'll pull out the folder instead. I think it came out this afternoon, didn't it?
Did. Thought I embedded it into your packet in a nice usable format. Apparently not. So so this is. The majority of what I was waiting for, these three licenses, there's one additional license that has not been renewed at this time, so. I guess my request and recommendation to the board is to approve these three licenses that we presented for you. We will get these issued for tomorrow, and then the one business that has not renewed their license, I will, unless you direct me otherwise, I'll be sending them a notice that they are. No longer licensed to conduct business in the town. And ask them to follow up if if their plans are to continue to to do business in town.
I make a motion, we approve the twenty twenty-one business licenses for Dunkin' Donuts, sixty-three French King Highway. Berving Equipment, thirty-eight French King Highway, class two, I sell repair motor vehicles, trans tractors, farm equipment, small engines. Great House, eleven East Main Street. Issue date for all three. Eight February twenty-one, expiring December twenty-first.
December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one.
December thirty-first of twenty-one.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
I.
I.
Thank you. I'll get those issued.
Next item of business review surplus equipment request from the rec department. The third and. Third read.
First one was Park Street.
Make a motion, we approve the surplus property property request for. Playground equipment located at Park Street Park as attached.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
The next one was assorted used in used sports equipment, old swing set, baseball, basketball, and tennis items. In the attached memo. The. I guess my only question mark is on the proposed actions. The the prior stuff was all scrap, which is pretty straightforward, but this list is a variety of. Donate or offer to town residents or discard in the. Your understanding was that they had a plan to actually execute that, or they were looking for our decision on what to do with it?
I believe that the suggestion was to make a public announcement. They were available on a first come, first served basis to Irving residents. And then whatever was not collected or claimed by a certain date, the remainder would be donated.
There's no reason that they couldn't handle that, right? As long as we've deemed it.
Correct. Yep.
I'll make a motion that we deem the assorted used sports equipment and old swing set, baseball, basketball, and tennis items surplus and. Direct the recreation commission to. Take the appropriate actions to offer or dispose of set equipment.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Then we had a surplus equipment request from the. Public library. Correct. And then cord, two wooden bookshelves, wireless antenna, and a Dell desktop computer. Correctionation was to dispose of the computer equipment and potentially to. Sell the bookshelves.
Correct.
Plan on the method for that? Were we thinking municipal or offering it to local residents first, or?
I guess what I would ask you, I'll describe what my thought was, and then if you all are comfortable authorizing me to to handle it in this manner.
You mentioned that before, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I think what we discussed was we would first make it available on our website to the residents. So in the next around town, which would be the March issue. We would include a photograph, and we would set a date for folks to respond to us. So assuming we only have two shelves, assuming that they are claimed through that process by. That date in March, they would be gone. If for some reason they are not gone after that process, I would then recommend putting them on municipal. Because we've already made them available to the residents first and foremost. Are you comfortable with that approach?
I am.
I am as well. I think, thank you for the reminder. I think we talked about that someone could bid on one or both, and it would be. Would we take the lowest bidder for? We take the lowest bidder, and if they didn't bid for both, then the second lowest bidder. Would we take the lowest bidder for, we take the lowest bidder, and if they didn't bid for both, then the second lowest bidder for the second one?
Highest bidder.
Thank you.
Cost is lowest.
Really good for whoever wanted the shelf.
Nice.
Oh goodness. Yeah, so highest bidder, and if they had only bid on a single unit, then it would be the second highest bidder.
Correct.
Two, we'd offer them the one, if they, if they wanted it for half the bid. So, okay. I have no concerns with that either.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we surplus the two wooden bookshelves through a what do we call that? Local auction? Island auction. And scrap the wireless antenna and desktop computers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item of business is review of meeting minutes. We have the minutes from June 1st, 2020.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes of June 1st, 2020 as written.
I will second. Any changes?
I have none.
I do not either. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Did you have a chance to review the minutes that were sent today, Bill?
I did.
Okay. Minutes of February 1st, 2021.
I make a motion, we accept the, approve the February 1st, 2020, 2021 minutes as written.
I will second. Any changes?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item of business, we covered the vacancies already in library trustees and school committee. Thank you to those interested parties and welcome aboard. The, we'll pass over the COVID-19 micro enterprise loan forgiveness application for Artscape landscaping. Some further info to gather there still. And then we have the ninth water commitment for FY21. Make a motion. Yes, sir?
As I was saying, I'll get that on the screen for you.
Oh, make a motion, we approve the ninth water commitment for FY21 in the amount of $61.32 for final charges at 22 Prospect Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
10th water commitment for FY21. Make a motion, we approve the 10th water commitment fiscal 21, the amount of $118.26 for final charges at 13 Lillian's Way.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Great.
And we've already covered the bridge twice. So I think that wraps up our, our regular business. We had our meeting list. I think we've pretty much covered what needs to be in next meeting. Although I can't seem to find that email from today for some reason with that on it.
Here we go. It's on the screen for you.
So yeah, so we have 22 budget, which we discussed, review of revenue expenses, STM draft review as well. We swatch smoke and die testing, engineer agreement, I'm assuming that's for Bridge Street?
Um, no, that was, it's a, it's an engineering proposal for that smoke and die testing. That's handled by a few visioners.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Then we have the complete streets engineering. We should also review the Bridge Street engineering at this point. And FY22 fuel contracts, and rather than tentative police chief interview, it'll be chief of police questions and scheduling and, and format discussion.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else for the 22nd? Sounds full already.
Can I just, can I just note on the, a 18 Pleasant Street had been discussed, maybe coming into this conversation for the 22nd, and I held it off only because we've noted a title concern that I think the remedy will be recommending to you all, putting a eminent domain taking article on the special town meeting warrant. Just to clarify, it's not personal property. When the, the partial was purchased, this is the parcel that the library, old library currently sits on. It was purchased by the Irving School District number three in the 1800s. Very clearly, the Irving School District number three no longer exists. But there's just a question, was that ever dissolved and then incorporated into the town of Irving? There's no, there's a disconnect in the titles. So a, a remedy for that, and very clearly, you've occupied this property for 150 years. So there's no question that belongs to the town of Irving. But in terms of the potential future use, this could always hang up a sale. And so before we do any further subdivisions or changing of the property, it may make sense just to go to town meeting, do a very simple article that authorizes the select board to take that property by eminent domain, which just clears the title and makes it very certain that it belongs to the town of Irving. So it doesn't probably make sense to review a subdivision plan until we've talked about maybe just clearing up this title issue that we've come across. So.
Sounds good. Okay. All right, well, Bill, Brian will reach out if we decide we need to have a meeting next week to, to deal with the bridge and, and any other pressing business. And if not, then we will meet on the 22nd and.
Okay. Can, Brian, could you give me a call on the time for Wednesday's meeting?
Correct. The only thing that's gonna maybe delay us on Wednesday, I'm assuming it would be late morning, but the only thing that may delay us is the snowstorm that we're getting tomorrow. I don't know how significant it will be, but um, I will be in communication with one. And as soon as I know how, how prepared the streets are, that will help us guide when we can get out there and do this work with you. And I'll be sure to tell you. Yep.
Thank you.
Of course.
Excellent. Yeah, and I'll coordinate with Glenn on a time that I can make, and then we'll, we'll circulate that officially once, once we've set it.
Right.
If we have to move it to Thursday, are you available, Bill? Just, just because of weather, if he gets?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you both.
Great. Motion to adjourn at 8:50. One.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was a full meeting, and you guys did it in under two and a half hours. That was impressive.
Fortunately, the other business wasn't so involved.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. See you.
Good night.